So, I'm Barb Fish. I'm the council president, serving as the mayor until we make an appointment in April. We'll do the roll call, please Christina.
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Alright, we have a quorum. I want to thank all of you in the audience for wearing masks. I appreciate it. I have two elderly parents and I have two little grandsons, and so I thank you very much for wearing your masks. We'll go ahead with the agenda. We're making a correction on the agenda. We're pulling off E3 Rushmore Project Purchase Agreement. We're not quite ready for that yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
I need a motion to approve the agenda, please. Any discussion? Alright. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Minutes. We've got minutes from February 25th and March 1st. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion, changes on the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Alright, the minutes are approved. We're gonna move to claims, which are on, starting on page 14. Any question on claims for the staff? It's a motion to approve the claims. Any discussion on the claims? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the claims are approved. I know a lot of you are familiar with the agenda, but I know that we also have folks that watch our meeting online, and so I like to just give a little bit of information on what we're doing, just in case they are new to our system. And so, we're moving to the consent calendar, and that is something where plats of land have been reviewed by our city engineer and our P&amp;Z committee, and they are just bringing them forward to us for approval. They can always be discussed if we pull them off of the consent calendar, but at this point, does anybody have any reason to pull them off of the consent calendar? If not, I'll take a motion for the consent. Okay, so we have a motion to approve plats of land. Do we have those up there? Yep. A, B, and C under item 6. Any discussion on the consent calendar? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Those are kind of the, um, the housekeeping things that we need to get through at the beginning of the meeting. Our next item is going to be visitors and timed items. So this is an opportunity for the public to come forward and talk about anything you may want to talk about. You're limited five minutes. If there's an item on the agenda that you want to discuss, now is the time to do it. We do not have discussion later in the meeting. And if you come forward, I'd ask that you state your name and your address, and we can ask you questions or, you know, clarify things, but we cannot take action. To take action on an item for a city, for our city council, it has to be posted on our agenda 24 hours in advance. So that's why we can't take any action. So is there anyone here that would like to address the council at this time? Oh, yep, there's some chairs over on the wall if you guys need a chair. Come on up if you have something.
Dave Ellipson, 1102 North Chestnut. We were notified by the council or by Tammy about the annexation of the property around, on the northeast side of Brandon, and we've spoken with several landowners also, and we are opposed to it. We see absolutely no benefit to be annexed into the city of Brandon. Thank you.
Okay. So you're talking about the annexation study?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Nicole Haug. I live at 2020 East Redwood Boulevard. I'm here also for Chelsea Nelson and Ed Beal at 2080 East Redwood, as they're out of town. Born and raised there for 38 years. My grandparents were there before us, my parents before them. We're set up as an agricultural property. That is how we make our living, and we are not for the annexation either.
Thank you.
Darlene Kiner, 2111 East Redwood Boulevard. And I also have a large tract of land and use it for hay and am opposed to the annexation, and would like to receive more information, I guess, about the costs and obligations. Thank you.
Do I gotta push a button?
Nope, it's on. You're on.
My name is Jess Ellipson. I live at 1104 North Chestnut. My family has been on that property for about 130 years. We have a significant amount of farmland. I have a lot of animals, and as long as I'm alive, I have no desire to ever be a part of Brandon City Limits. That does not make a whole lot of sense to me, and I know that I, I don't see why you would add a farm into annexation in the first place. So yeah, very against it, always will be.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Matthew Huguson. I live at 2300 Oak Hill Circle. I guess, like these other people that have just spoken, I am adamantly opposed to the annexation as well. I don't think that the city will be able to show us any benefit that I will get from this annexation besides incurring some big tax increase. Certainly nobody, we already have our own private wells, wants to be hooked up to the city of Brandon's water, has been complained about in the past by innumerable people. Unless you guys can actually show us how it's to our benefit, I think everybody will be exposed to it. There's been a case law in peer for the same type of thing. Unless you can show an actual benefit to the landowners, you are not allowed to tax them with increasing tax bases without, in a direct benefit. I'm also an avid hunter. I like to bow hunt. I have kids that are gonna start bow hunting, and being within the city limits will prohibit that as well. We have approximately seven acres, and I guess I don't want that to be affected by that as well. So again, I'm, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Others?
Good evening. My name is Aaron Hanson, 604 Pine, soon to be 405 Chestnut. We are also opposed to the annexation. I don't think it's wise for the city to be pulling all kinds of ag land in and extending stuff out like water and sewer that the city doesn't have adequate resources of as it stands today. We would love to have further input and for you guys to actually have a conversation with some of the landowners. Right now, all we've received is a letter. I understand there's a study underway, so there will probably be more forthcoming, but we would invite you to actually come and talk to us, look at the area that you're talking about. Thank you.
John Berkman, 102 North Chestnut. I think most of you know who I am, right next to the development there. I'm opposed to it right now. All I do, all I see that benefit to is to the city is create more dollars in your pocket, maybe out of control your spending a little bit more than what you've been doing, and until, I foresee a good reason for me to sell my farm property or develop it would be the time when I would ask anybody from the city council that I'd be willing to be annexed in the city, and at that point in time, I don't think I should be forced to pay any higher assessments than I already am. You've already got assessments stacked on my property, which I don't think is fair for Bethany Drainage Assessment, Country Club Drainage Assessment, and Chestnut Assessment. So I guess until I can see where you can help me out, I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else?
My name is Travis Gens, 314 North Chestnut Boulevard. Very new to the area. Thankfully, all these people that I've heard from already have been informing me about what's going on, and that's the only information I have. So I guess that's kinda where we're all coming from here, is we have no information on this, and I got a letter saying we were gonna be annexed or there was gonna be a study. So as of right now, I'm opposed, but we just need more information is kinda where we're all coming from. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we want to address that process at this point, or down the road, or it's not on the agenda, or how do we handle that, Brian?
Right now, we've obviously contacted CCOG. They are going to conduct a annexation study. That's the first step in the process. As part of that process, there will be meetings with the affected property owners. Like, we don't have a timeline yet, because this is just the very start of the process. So, and, and they are correct that, you know, the city has to prove benefit in order to annex, and that's what the annexation study is for, to take a look at that.
Um, Brian, can we, how long, so right now, we're just in a study, so all that's happening is just a study. So really, we don't know anything that we're not telling you, other than there's just a study, and this study, Tammy, correct my friend wrong, you said it could take a year? Is that what it could take? Just to kinda give them a guideline, and then after that, from my understanding, we will have meetings, depending on what that shows, right?
Right. So, CCOG is working on this study, and then we're also doing preliminary engineering with DGR engineers. And so they have gone out and they've done some survey work. We've also had Geotech go out there and take a couple soil borings. Besides that, they haven't done any design, and that's probably not going to be done until fall. And then that study, there's still a long process with that, and so every, we'll try to keep everybody informed as much as we can.
Why are you doing this study?
So, part of this study is to look at Redwood and Chestnut as it's becoming a safety concern. It is a gravel township road right now. We're gonna have a lot of development on the east side of town, as well as the new elementary school, and most of that traffic with the long-range transportation plan, a lot of that traffic goes down Redwood and Chestnut instead of taking Aspen and Split Rock. So it's gonna continue to see more and more traffic, and the township cannot afford to pave it.
And we're going to, we're not going to go back and forth asking questions in this particular part of the meeting. If you have some questions, call City Hall, call one of the council members. We're gonna keep moving on, because this is the public comment part. Does anybody else have items to bring forth to the council?
Can I ask?
Yeah.
Could someone from the group just, just ask, or answer this question for me? What type of information would you like to see from the city regarding the, the study, and then ultimately the, the possible annexation? What type of information would you like to, to get from us?
Being an agricultural property, can you come, please?
So being an agricultural property, obviously, we utilize a lot more water, and being on the real water and things like that. I'm not gonna be told that we can't water our horses because we're under water restriction, that we're getting the water that we need, and it's on a utilized time basis, number one. We're all set up for septic. We all have our propane. You say that you deem the road unsafe. The only thing that's unsafe after being there my whole life, and like I said, there's a stretch of road that goes in front of me, I see it every day, is when people hit the gravel road going 60 miles an hour and hit the washboards. So as far as being deemed unsafe, I mean that the speeds on the road and everything else are what's causing the high maintenance cost for the township as well.
I guess, to clarify what I would like to know, I would like to know what it's gonna impact me in terms of the cost of my basis per $100,000 valuation, what benefit I'm going to get. You talk about contacting city. My wife has tried to call this lady over here many times and left messages and got zero response, and I've been told that by several other people as well. Not just one, many. I think that's an issue you guys need to resolve at your, in your own time with her. The other thing I'd like to know that impacts me in terms of whether I'm gonna be able to continue hunting. I don't know if the city can carve out things for bow hunting. I know obviously there's no firearms, but I, I don't want to be bound by the city telling me what I can and not do on my own property. I bought that property specifically to be able to do things I'm doing. Otherwise, I would've lived in Sioux Falls. If I want to be in a city, I would definitely have been there. That's where my job is, but I love the community, I love the schools district, and I love where I live. I just don't want to be forced by city. I don't want to be hooked up to their septic and their sewer system, and if I'm gonna have to pay for that, I mean, a lot of us have already invested a lot of money in getting that stuff, and I've been told that if you get annexed, you'll probably be forced to hook up to the city water, whether you use it or not, and also to their septic system, which I don't want to be. You talk about other utility problems out there. I guess personally, on a different note, I'm at the bottom of Oak Hill Circle. I have all kinds of city runoff into my property, which is now eroding my road, which I want addressed as well at some point. I don't know if that's her job or not, but there should've been a septic system there. It comes from, all the way from Country Club, runs around the corner, and runs across and starts eroding my property. So I'd like to get that addressed as well at some point.
So, Brian or Tammy, CCOG, that's for the public, that's the Southeast Council of Governments. They're the ones that will actually do the study, correct? What's their process for contacting homeowners and for getting their questions asked, answered, I should say?
CCOG will not contact landowners.
Okay. Who does?
We do.
Jen, this isn't on the agenda, so if they keep...
Okay.
We can address it at some other meeting, but I think we need to keep moving. Am I correct? Alright, we're moving on to public hearings unless there's somebody else that has something.
I do just wanna say thank you for all of you that came out here, and obviously, when we know more, we'll let you know. We, I, we took notes, I saw all of this. When we know cost, all that stuff, we're gonna let you know. We just, we don't know right now, but thank you for coming and speaking tonight. I do appreciate that.
Okay, public hearing, wild prairie, winehouse. So we, or I know it's a game, so we need to have a motion. Is this a public hearing?
Yep, public hearing. So you gave, asked for public comment first on the application for a liquor license, or winery license for Wild Prairie Winery at the farmer's market. And then if, if, depending on the comments, then you have a motion to approve or deny.
Is there any public comment on Wild Prairie Winery having wine in the farmer's market? Anybody here that would like to address that?
Sorry.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Double D alcohol license for a street man? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, double D alcohol license for a street man? Anybody here from the public that would like to address that?
Paul Ody, 1401 West Creekside Drive. Jason and I own the double D. We did a similar, actually same exact event last fall. Went really well, and I've talked with Christine in the application, and we're just mirroring that. Last time, I think, there was some notes on... So, again, live music, 6 to 10 p.m. Last time, we had the street until 12 to give us two hours of cleanup after the event. Fencing and the barricades, we actually borrowed from the city. We put it up, but we borrowed, I don't know, it's like orange fence. Cleanup again is on us, and the date is, uh, May 27th, May 22nd, right? Yeah, sorry. I was looking at different notes, but, um, I guess, yep, mirror of the last event we did, so.
Counsel? Anyone else wishing to address this issue from the public? Okay, take a motion. Just got, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, first reading of ordinance 622. Definition, thanks Paul for coming. Definition for hard surfacing, Tammy?
This amendment adds impervious surface and permeable pavement definitions, and then will revise the hard surface definition to account for the permeable pavement.
And this was reviewed and brought forward from planning and zoning?
Correct. Yep.
Any comments from the public on the first reading of ordinance 622? Motion?
Someone.
Have a motion and a second for the first reading. Any discussion from counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, first reading for 622 is moved forward. First reading of ordinance 623. Call on Tammy again.
This amendment will allow the height of the principal building in an institutional zone to be equal to or exceed 75 feet by a conditional use permit.
Any comment from the public on this particular ordinance? If not, take a motion.
I move.
Have a motion and a second for first reading of ordinance 623. Any discussion from the council?
So besides industrial buildings, what else would this apply to?
This is institutional, so this is like city parks, city facilities.
Schools, churches.
Right.
And it's by conditional use only, so it'd have to run through P&amp;Z for it to be allowed?
Right.
Got it.
Okay. Any other questions, Jack?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, first reading of ordinance 624.
This amendment adds language clarifying that the front yard setbacks, which are 15 feet, will be measured from the sidewalk easement edge that is closest to the structure.
Any comment from the public on this particular ordinance? Hey? Take a motion?
Second.
So the first emotion and a second on the first reading ordinance 624. Any discussion, counsel? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Man, you're, you're working us tonight, Tammy. Okay, first reading of ordinance 625, just setback requirements.
Uh, this is the quarry distance requirements. So this one removes the distance requirement as it can be addressed through the conditional use permit process.
Again, any comments from the public on the first reading? We'll entertain a motion then, please.
Okay.
Any discussion, counsel?
Yeah, I guess I got one too.
Jamaica, which Jamaica?
So Tammy, this, you said removes the, the setback requirement?
Right.
Which, which is what right now?
Right now, it says there needs to be 1,000 feet from a residential property, or residential zone.
From a residential zone, correct? And who is requesting this change?
Uh, there wasn't a formal request for it. It was just as we started talking about it and what it should be. It kinda seemed to vary from time to time.
Okay. I guess I can't see the need for it myself, but, um, unless you can explain what the need for it and why we're even going this route. I don't, I mean, if, if they get the sand and gravel fit up and going out there, I don't think 1,000 feet is anything. I don't know of any other place in town that you're talking about. I don't know. Any other comments?
Tim, do you remember that discussion?
Sort of, kind of. I'm olders now, so I don't remember everything.
Yeah, I know.
I do know that we, we discussed this at planning and zoning. They, they came up with this because we did have a set number, and when they thought about a quarry, they thought it would be best if we could handle with this with the conditional use permit. It just gives the P&amp;Z a little more flexibility when it comes to looking at each parcel that would apply for this, instead of just setting a number. It's no different than setting the height in the institutional zone, rightly. We set a number, well, we picked that number by just going, well, the PAC is that tall, so let's just do that. There was no real reason for it. It was to cover the tallest building we had in town in an institutional zone. So, there's really, I mean, when you come to picking a number, it's just, you know, you set a number based on an opinion. So, by doing it by conditional use, then that allows you to take a parcel, actually look at the parcel, and then make a decision based on where the parcel's located. That's why, I think. Tammy, you concur for the reason? Okay, alright. I just had to get something straight in my mind here as to why we were even doing this, but that's, that's a decent explanation for me.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, um, we've got a motion and a second, right? Let's try. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, and the final one, Tammy. First reading of ordinance 626.
This amendment changes the maximum buildings for foot area from 200 feet to 600 feet on neighborhood and public utility facilities.
And that was just a matter of we needed larger facilities for our utilities?
Right.
Any comment from the public in regards to ordinance 626? Okay, take a motion, please.
I move.
Sorry.
Any discussion from counsel? All in favor?
Well, I'm sorry, I guess I have another question. So, I'm thinking, we're going from 200 square foot to 600 square foot for a potential building like, like was originally proposed over on Palmer Circle, correct?
Right. So these are only neighborhood and public utility facilities, so they'd be like our booster stations, our lift stations, those types. Or like if a midco cocaine man has put up a building, or a lion is putting in a building, most of these buildings are over 200 square feet now. We have a few lift stations that don't have chip flongs. They do have generators, but they don't have other controls and everything in a building. Those ones would barely meet the 200 square feet, but all our booster stations are well above that. So 600 is kind of the happy medium there. And if we needed something more than that, then it would go to a conditional use permit.
Why, wouldn't it go to a conditional use permit over 200 now?
No, that's not really enough.
Okay. Would require variance to exceed that size. Would require a variance to exceed that size. All right, so... If we're, if the ordinance says two hundred square feet now, and we're moving to six hundred square feet, where's the conditional use permit coming into play here?
If it was the over six hundred feet.
What's wrong, just leaving it at two hundred and letting the CUP handle it like we are in some of the other ordinances?
There's really not much that covers that two hundred. So we'd be doing a conditional use permit for every single one of them.
So, the existing buildings, they're over two hundred?
Most of them are, yes.
And so, were those handled with the CUP then? They must have been.
And they look at every one of them?
We're just trying to clean this up, I think, is what we're trying to do.
Well, I just don't want to get to the point where, uh, now we can put in an even larger building in the middle of a residential area that people that were in that previous, uh, area were opposed to. So I can't see why we would, without due process here, of just kind of, just decide that we can put up a bigger building just because it's, um, a city building in a residential area, so.
And to kind of go on that of a question, then if the ones existing, does this new ordinance then allow them, whether it's us or Midco or Alliance, to expand the current building that's been there to six hundred? And essentially over double the space of it?
I don't know about that.
With the proper building permits in the process, yes.
They could do that without, so they could, if somebody's used to having this two hundred square foot building in their neighborhood, it could potentially double the size.
I think you'll find that most of them are already over two hundred square feet.
The three water booster stations that we have all exceed eight hundred square feet. But I'm assuming, if that's the case, that was, that had to be approved through some sort of a CUP?
I would not necessarily assume that.
Okay, how would that get approved then?
I'd have to go back and look and see if there was a... It wouldn't have been through a conditional use process, it would have been through a variance.
Or a variance or something?
So this is really trying to help protect and control those instances? All right, do you have any other questions on the first reading?
I would invite you all Thursday to the planning and zoning meeting if you'd like to learn why we come up with these decisions.
All right, other comments?
Tim, was there any, what was the reasoning behind this one, I guess?
Again, not great memory, we do a lot of these. Normally, you know, buildings have been built through the city of Brandon for the last fifty years, right? So, not everything has always been handled exactly the way it should have been for the last fifty years. So you have things that exist that have been in existence for thirty years, forty years. So you redo the ordinances every once in a while to sort of clean up the language so that everybody's covered. That's why you do it.
Good, we're moving to the motion. All in, I think we have a motion, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let's take a roll call on that, Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion passes for the first reading. Okay, um, we got an award, right Tammy? That's exciting.
We did.
Yeah. Tell us about it. Oh, great, okay.
Good evening, counsel, thank you for allowing us to bring this award to your attention. Paul Sano with HDR and Todd Mergen with HDR. So, this award, um, I've been told that I have a minute, I think I negotiated a minute and a half, which is impossible for me, so I'm on script, Todd made me bring this. So just a quick explanation of the award. We're a part of the South Dakota Engineering Society. This award is the Eastern Chapter of Award for Outstanding Engineering Achievement. This award is established to acknowledge the accomplishments of the engineering profession. Each year, the Eastern Chapter of SDES, which is basically the entire east side of the state, recognizes engineering achievements that have captured the innovative and dynamic spirit of a profession dedicated to public service. Any worthy project that contributes, contributes, excuse me, to meeting a human or social need may be nominated by any engineer or engineering firm. Nominations include specific end products such as buildings and dams, significant process, contribution towards solving an engineering problem such as environmental or traffic congestion and/or industrial research and development. Some criteria are application of engineering principles, originality and innovation, complexity, social significance, and economic impact. Going off script, HDR is super excited about this opportunity to be able to work for the city of Brandon. This isn't just about HDR either, this is about the community and counsel and staff. We went through a significant period of time where we met as an engineering design team, where there were quite a few individuals sitting here today that were involved in the process, coming up with decisions that we were doing for the core area. I would like to bring this to counsel's attention, if you'd like to pass that around. So this was recognizing the core area Phase One for engineering outstanding achievement. I consider it, it's actually considered Project of the Year. This is one of two Project of the Years that HDR was credited for. Again, we don't take all the credit. The other one was Twenty-Sixth Street over the rail at Southeastern, the intersection. So this is one of two projects that were awarded.
Is that?
Yep, go ahead.
Is that based on size of project?
Um, no. No, not necessarily, I'm not on the committee, but with the, the Eastern Chapter has a committee that goes through project nominations, and like I said, it's based, yeah, yeah, that's yours to keep. We, we have one and we made that one for the city of Brandon. The criteria that I explained, that's based on a percentage of, uh, those applications of engineering principle, complexity, I would say Brandon Core Area was a fairly complex project. The amount of work, and I can let Todd kind of step in here, that we did in a short amount of time, was, was a pretty big achievement, so.
The reason I, I'm sorry, the reason I asked that question is because, you know, that Twenty-Sixth Street was, uh...
Large.
Times what, you know, larger than this?
Right. The Eastern Chapter, yep, that's good, good question. The Eastern Chapter used to have project, uh, award nominations for large project and small project. They kind of went away from those distinctions just because a lot of the projects in this area that met the criteria were mostly large projects. It's hard to distinguish based on cost what a large project is. Sometimes, uh, small projects have a way more environmental significance than a project such as this that has a large impact on the engineering principles. So, it, it, I think they went away from the large project, small project description, but still have two awards.
Was there any indication as to why we won the award? Like anything specific that we were doing?
Uh, not necessarily. There's, like I said, they go through the award process, there's a percentage that they allot towards each category. I think we can be selfish and just say that we're proud of the core area. I think it turned out to be a fantastic project. I know there's some anecdotal...
Yeah, it was, it was, you know, a great project for, for your community and, and we're, we're so pleased to be here today to present you and all your team with, with the award. You know, we kind of went through the slides here and saw the Phase One, but the, the upgrade of the infrastructure, just under twenty blocks, you know, a mile and a half of surfacing, and just several, several miles of utilities. And I know you're all very aware of the project, you get to drive through it every day, or on a regular basis, I should say, so, um... You know, this project demonstrates that, you know, there's a, there's a team approach to it. We had Confluence and HDR, the city of Brandon, Geotech.
Sukup Construction, the contractor.
And the contractor, Sukup Construction. And the robust, aggressive schedule that they had to complete this project in this timeframe, I think all those things really play together in the application that was put together for us to win this award. So, congrats to everybody that, you know, was a part of this team, and that's all of us here. So, uh, we truly do look forward to winning more awards with you and, you know, as this team, so I mean, 'cause, you know, this was a project you guys, you know, spent a lot of time putting design criteria together. So, so, we, we just want to say thank you and we look forward to this in the future. This is, this is good stuff.
Yeah, we consent, what I just handed out was the actual application, and I can give you the criteria too, that they use, the, the committee uses to judge the project. Phase two, real quick, Phase Two Design is starting too, so we'll be moving into the next phase. And we really appreciate you guys allowing us to work for this community, we truly enjoy it.
Tammy, thank you, to you and your team for getting this together, I think it turned out really great. Sue Metro?
Hey.
Jesse?
Good evening, how's it going today?
Good.
Well, hey, continuing on the theme of awards, we had an award given out to, actually two awards given out to stakeholders in Brandon at our annual meeting in February. I have a video I want to play for you really quick here, I was told that it's got to be brief, so it's a brief video.
I think a lot of times, the people in economic development who have been on the, on the ground, sometimes either don't get the credit that they maybe deserve, or get enough credit sometimes.
In the process of economic development, you meet for the first time with the prospect. And it's kind of like the dating game, right? You're kind of feeling each other out, and a lot of the success of it really goes to how comfortable they feel after that first meeting. And Dennis just had a way that they, more than, times I can count, the prospect would tell me later on, he goes, yep, that guy was great, he told us he could get this done, we believe he can do it.
Dennis is a natural teacher and a mentor, and it doesn't matter what community you live in or where you work, if he can help in some way, if he can put his experience to work and help you do your job, he is the first one to jump in and do that.
He's, he's a funny guy, he loves to tell stories, and he's got a million stories that he tells, and anybody that knows him has probably heard them all by now.
Old school is totally fine, especially when it comes to Dennis, because he knows what's been involved. I would say just his legacy, his tenure at the city, he kind of reminds me of my own grandpa.
Some would say he's extremely stubborn, and, oh my gosh, he is the most relentless USD coyote fan. And talk about the years of abuse that Eckoff and I have had to put up with as jackrabbits.
He's very, very passionate as a public servant. He really cares about his community, and not only that, but his state.
I think it's just a great benefit for him to be recognized, to be able to show him the appreciation that he's brought to his community, building it up over the years. That doesn't happen overnight, that takes some long hours, some sweat even, to make that all happen. And I, I think he's well deserving of that.
Well, as you've read by now, we had the chance to award Dennis as the, uh, as the Regional Economic Development Champion of the Year at our annual meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I can't think of anybody else right now more deserving of that award. As, as a young economic development professional too, he's a mentor to me, and I learn from him every single day. And so, want to make sure you're aware of that. We also awarded the Corson Development Association as a Regional Business Partner of the Year for their efforts to develop the land outside of, or north of, north of the interstate, and all the success we've seen there for attracting development to this region. So, two for three for out of our awards this year, congratulations. And last year, George Jorgensen also won the Regional Economic Development Champion Award, the inaugural award, that is. And so, um, thanks again for your investment into our organization. You might have read or heard that we are rebranding and consolidating Makita Makita into one organization. We're calling it the Sue Metro Growth Alliance. Councilman Jorgensen mentioned to me before the meeting, it's not, we don't have a really great way to use it as an acronym, there's no Makita way to call it, so we're trying to figure out a good, a good nickname for it. If you have any ideas, please let us know, but nothing's really changing with the organization other than the name, the branding, and we're trying to just really improve on our operations. So our mission is going to be to sustain and support the economic growth of the communities, businesses, and general stakeholders in the metro area outside of Sioux Falls, which is what we're currently doing. And by working together with our partners, we really have seen success in creating strong, united economic development. And so, we're focusing on two pillars going forward, as growth and engagement. And growth is what you think of when you think of economic development, that's your business development and attraction, your business retention and expansion, residential development. On the engagement side, it's a little bit, little bit more non-traditional, the community development side, and that's, that's marketing, staff support, education, and public policy. Now, I want to talk a little bit about two things here that are a little bit different. One is economic development education. There's, there's a transfer happening right now across the metro area, it's a generational transfer. We have some of the boomers that are starting to phase out of public service roles, both either elected or staff-wise, and this next generation's coming in. And our, our organization, we feel that we have an opportunity here to help provide a leadership experience for people, to teach them about economic development. And we'll be launching a cohort later on this year as our plan, where each community will be able to provide one or two people from their town to go through this program. We're going to be applying for a grant for that program. We're also thinking of launching an inaugural conference, that's going to be a discussion on our board meeting later on. The other thing would be staff support. We've heard from other communities that want to hire their own economic development people, and it's challenging. Many communities don't have the budget to hire a full-time person, which, if you include benefits and training, you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars a year at least for a full-time position. And we're creating a model where we can help provide that service at a lower cost. By utilizing our expertise in economic development, we can train that person, help supervise them, and put them to work focusing on your economic development needs. Right now, we're going to hopefully be trialing that out later on this year. We have a community that's interested in participating in this. We're still working out the details, it's, it's complex, but regional economic development is complex. We're looking to do two communities to one person. And by doing that, we can create a, a model that is, that is very financially doable for most communities, municipalities. And on the other side, by, by pairing two communities to one person, we're giving that person even more experience in different ways of doing things, which in theory might help translate to more success working projects and implementing economic development policy. Moving on, our investor information is still going to be the same, it's based on population. We're implementing that into Lincoln County as well, and it resets with the census. We also do like a CPI annual growth rate that we implement into our, into our work. And we're looking at changing our board structure. So you'll be, you'll be receiving a draft resolution in the future along with a plan of consolidations. For us to consolidate Lakita Makita officially into one organization, we need the investors, which is the municipalities, to appoint somebody to come to a duly called meeting of our members to approve our plan of consolidation. And so that you'll be seeing, hopefully in the next few weeks, we need to appoint our, our new executive board for that to be official, and hopefully have that plan then wrapped up sometime probably in May, if everything goes according to our schedule. We're dedicated to growing your community, that's what we do, we work projects, we help implement marketing goals. We really, we're really here to be your one-stop shop for economic development. And for each community, it's a little bit different, in Brandon, we work a lot on projects. Having an industrial park that's built out is a huge asset for our region. And being so close to the Minnesota border and along I-90 is one way that we see your community continuing to grow, especially in the industrial side. If there's anything that I can do for you as the executive director of the Sue Metro Growth Alliance, please let me know. My email is jessef@sumetro.com. And going forward, our, our plan is to come to you at least twice a year to present on what we're working on, what's happening. And each of our communities are investors, and we want to treat you like investors and give you the time that you deserve. And so you also let you know what we're working on, so maybe we can even find ways to work more together in the future. Without taking any questions that you might have, we had our first mayor's roundtable last week, which was, I think, just an amazing experience, I got to sit in on it. We had, I think, eight or nine mayors from across... I got to sit in on it. We had, I think, eight or nine mayors from across the metro, Lincoln, Minnetonka counties there, including Miraton Aiken. We just had some great conversation. Any questions for me?
We want to thank you for all you do, Jesse. I know the Economic Development Group appreciates working with you. Dennis, congrats. Dennis has been a champion of Brandon for a long time. So we appreciate it, Dennis. Thank you, Jesse, for coming. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, council. Have a good night.
All right. We're going on to old business. Second reading, ordinance rezoning of a track from NRC to general business. Any public comment?
Here to answer any questions?
Okay, yep. This is the I-90.
Brandon, nice.
Brandon 90, oh, Brandon 90, okay.
Yeah, it's the west two-thirds of the, of the property. Map on page 54 shows the area that we rezoned. East one-third roughly will continue to be NRC.
There's been a lot of buzz about this. So this is, people are excited about this. Do we have any, anybody else from the public that would like to comment on the second reading? Okay. Any questions for Daryl? Okay, take a motion?
Yeah, real quickly.
Okay.
What's the latest, Daryl?
Dirt work has been awarded. We'll be moving dirt as soon as possible.
All right.
Yep. And we don't have anybody signed up yet, but we got a lot of interest. And my developer is saying, I'm just going to build it and say, come and get it.
Build it and he will come.
That's the plan.
Okay. Do we have a motion for second reading?
Yes.
And second.
Okay, we have a motion.
But I'm not worried about getting anybody signed up. Don't, don't get me wrong.
Get some move up.
We got a motion and a second for the second reading. Any discussion from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Daryl. You're ready to go.
Get her done.
Yep, get her done. And we also have a second reading of ordinance 628. That's the rezoning of Aspen Park from NRC, which is Natural Resources Conservation, to Institutional District, which we're trying to just clean up all of our public entities and move them into institutional districts. Any public, anybody from the public here to speak? All right, take a motion?
A motion.
Motion and second for second reading of ordinance 628. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Could you add any more onto the agenda than that? Good grief. Geez, Louise. That's nine of them. Wow. Okay. Standing committee reports. Golf course, Split Rock Creek Bank stabilization project. Tammy?
This is a proposal from Park Engineering to do the biological observation for the bank stabilization project out at the golf course. It's four, $5,000. And it's a FEMA requirement.
Which means what?
Um, they have to observe the Topeka Shiners, make sure they have a safe habitat.
Has anybody ever seen a Topeka Shiner?
Mm-hmm.
You have? I'd like to see one.
They're in the big suit.
Okay. All right. So we need a motion for that to approve them?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second for a biological observation. Any comments from the council? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Those little Shiners are going to be observed. Okay, moving on. Okay. All right, we've got a change order, number one.
Yes. And it has been approved by city staff, so they are currently working on this. That was just to keep them moving on the project. This is a change order to stabilize the banks with adding dirt and some more erosion control measures, such as vegetation over top of that dirt, so that it doesn't wash away. And this is again, for the Topeka Shiners. It's a requirement from FEMA.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
Move it through.
Anybody have any questions for Tammy on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Said with such enthusiasm. All right, pay application number two.
This is for $29,525.22 for the same project.
How's it, how's it going out there?
Really slow. It finally dried up enough to where they could get in there and work, and then it snowed today.
Yeah.
So they worked Saturday. And we'll see when they can get back in there.
And it's really wet.
Supposed to be 50s again by the end of the week, so.
Okay, entertain a motion for this, please.
Move it through.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So Tammy, what's, this one specifically on?
This is, this one's just a pay application. So this is for all the work that they did last month.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep. Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, take care of that. Moving on to hiring seasonal staff.
You've got a list of additional seasonal staff that weren't ready to be brought before the council at the last meeting. So they're listed there with their early rates.
Motion to approve.
Back in.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you've got some, Andrew's here someplace, got some staff. That'll help. Okay. We've got a work report, and then we have a request for Miles from Mutt's. I think Jamie's here. Want to come up and tell us about it, Jamie?
Hi, guys. My name is Jamie Smith. You got my address?
Yeah, please.
205 South Sunshine in Brandon. I own Anytime Fitness in town for four years now. This will be the fourth annual. We have put on a 5K walk and run that goes towards benefiting our local dog rescue, mile, or B squad. I also have Mandy here to represent B squad. We are seeking this year, usually we do it in the Brandon High School parking lot and using their track. This year, we're seeking use of Aspen Park. We just think the route will be a little bit more convenient for walkers, runners, and residential homes. It's the day of May 2nd. It would be that morning. We'd be seeking to use the Aspen Park, probably for setup, starting around 7:00 AM, and cleanup finishing around 11:00 AM. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has on that.
Dogs welcome?
Dogs welcome.
Have a hope so.
You require any traffic control during this?
Typically, in the past, we've had volunteers along the race route to kind of help with traffic. The nice thing with changing up our route a little bit, starting and ending at Aspen, is we're not going down nearly as many residential streets. So there's not nearly as much street crossing. If you can see, we would start at Aspen where that wider sidewalk is. They'd run up to Split Rock. And where it turns, they're going to then run down Split Rock, turning again at Holly, again on wider sidewalks, and then churning right before Casey's on Sioux. So really, there's not a lot of street crossing, but we will have volunteers still along the course to help facilitate, guide, make sure everyone's staying on track. But before, when we did it, the biggest intersection that we saw was they had to cross Aspen. And so we always had traffic control there. But with this new route, that won't be as much of an issue.
How many people do you get that participate, Jamie?
Well, last year was a little bit different because of COVID. I think we still saw between 80 to 100 participants.
150.
150, actually. I'm wrong. But prior years to that, we had about 300.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
That's great. Super. Devin, any concerns from your part?
No, no, I'm sure we'll, in fact, before.
Okay, all right. Any more questions, council? Get a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
And we got a motion and a second to approve. Any more comments?
Just a comment I had made on Thursday. It's been brought to our attention recently by a resident. The not all dog owners are, are wonderful at picking up their, their doggies doo-doo. So maybe you just have either some signage or
For sure.
A reminder on their registration or something would be appreciated.
Yes, we've always put a very must-do on the registration that they have to clean up. And then we'll also have volunteers along the way to, to watch for that.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a wage adjustment for Devin. Entertain a motion on that, please?
A motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any questions, comments? Appreciate your work, Devin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on. Seasonal help. Okay. So we've got a listing there of the seasonal help for Devin's crew. Any questions on that? We just need to approve those, Brian?
Correct.
Good.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the park seasonal staff. Any questions? So Devin, you'll have two mowers, and then the rest will be doing like?
Everything else.
Everything. Okay, everything else. All right. All right. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, got some crew. That'll help you out a little bit. When will they start, Devin?
Uh, probably early April. The first ones, dependent. It's all weather dependent.
Good. Okay, then we have a request for the third year for the McCarty Market. On, well, they're setting up on April 30th, and then it'll be May 1st. Okay. Any questions on that, council or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Back in.
I think it's been successful in the past.
It's, it's been very successful, actually. And they, they do a fantastic job. She would be here, but she's contesting her taxes. So she's not here tonight.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Anything else? Or go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Tim, at the coffee with the council, it was mentioned when we have these types of events, about making sure that these businesses are paying the Brandon sales tax. And I'm not sure how we regulate that, how that's enforced. Any ideas?
I suppose the event can, not really. There's not much. Because we don't get any information from the state. If you call and ask, they won't give us information. So, you know, the event holder can make sure they have a sales tax license, but that would be about it.
I don't think it's so much the, it's not so much the license. Christina, I think it's that they're, they're paying the Brandon sales tax, that they're listed, you know, they're making their sale here.
Right. And I, and we cannot get that information from the state.
I know Sturgis, for years, has had an issue with the rally.
Yeah.
Trying to make sure that all of those vendors are paying their appropriate sales tax to the state. And Sturgis, for a number of years, has been trying to work with the Department of Revenue to get investigative teams into Sturgis, and they don't. And that's the only way to get a, take, take a look and make sure that they're filling out all of their, their paperwork appropriately.
Okay, so how does like Berkans do it when they have the Summer Arts Festival, or Sioux Falls does it when they have their downtown arts festival? Like, because it's similar to that, right? Like where you have it. So how did, how did those other smaller communities that kind of hold those?
We'd have to, we'd have to check.
It's really on the honor system, right? The vendors' honor system?
Yeah, I think there's, might be a way on the website you can, where they can audit, but that would be about it.
So I've, I've worked events in the past where I've sold stuff, and they, South Dakota will keep track of who's there. And they will ask if you've had any sales at that event. But that is something they handle on a per-business basis. At least in the past, that's how it's done, been done with me. So.
Or I'm just curious, if we do things like this, how do other cities handle it? I would, I would like to see if Brian or Christina, if you could find out, like, like in Pioneer Park, do they, the city just rent out the space, and then they just pay like a booth space for the weekend? Or like, I, I'm just, I'm just curious, like if, or if the sales tax does come in play, or if it doesn't, or if they just say, okay, well, it's 50 bucks to rent the booth, or whatever. I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't, we haven't charged for use of parks in the past for events like this. I'm trying to think if we've had anything else down there. Well, we've got the Polaris thing coming up.
They pay for the salt there.
Yeah. But that's about it.
Salt there fee.
I know it was suggested at that same coffee thing that, I don't know if it's the chamber, or if it's some, or the, probably the organizer to instruct everyone that signs up to be sure that they're paying the city tax that way. Because I, I think somehow or another, they need, I think they could capture that. I know when I do my sales tax tip, probably too, you know, it's always listed by community where your sales are. I don't know, I think it's just one more way to just, to try to generate our funds.
When I let Elsie know that the event is approved, I want to see if she can let her vendors know the state and city sales tax that they would need to pay on those sales. And then she'll just have to reach out to those vendors. I think that's.
Yeah, I think that would be, you know, at least, at least we're making that effort that way. And if you guys can plan out, you know, what some of these other event organizers and/or cities do, I think would be, I think, I think it'd be helpful. I mean, we should be getting those revenues if we can.
I totally lost track. Have we voted on this or not?
There's, there's a motion.
There is a motion. Okay. All right. Let's vote on the motion. For the McCarty Market at McCarty Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Boy. Yeah. Good, good question, Jack. See if we can encourage that. Okay, we've got the Brandon Edge. Would like to do an Easter egg hunt at McCarty Park.
Move it through.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any questions on the Brandon Edge Easter egg hunt? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Got the police report, inspections report. Okay, we've got a wage adjustment for Tyler Sarda on page 101.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second for Tyler Sarda. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Congratulations to Tyler. He's been with us a while. We have the MedStar ambulance report. Sorry to keep you waiting so long. We've had a full agenda tonight.
Oh, I was scared Brian said I have to wait at least ten minutes.
Something like that, yeah.
Somebody parked.
Right. Well, actually, it's really good to have Brian back. You know, he's always kind of a scary deal, him being in the hospital and all that. But he's, he's done real well for us. I've given you all a, kind of a little packet there. The one thing it doesn't have, and I apologize for it, but it's public information, on the time responses, our dispatch hadn't been putting in when they arrived on scene, only when they left. But our average response time is between four and six minutes in the city. And I wish I could talk to you more about that, because it's patient confidentiality. But I was, again, just approached and thanked for the response time while I was sitting here. So what I gave you here is from 10:01 until the end of, end of the year. And I gave you all of the calls. And this one right here, they go by months. And this one right here, they go by months. And it's all the calls and it tells you where the pickup call was in Brandon. We don't put the location there just because obviously we don't want people to know where people are being picked up. And then over here, it's Avera, Sanford, patient refusals, you know, liposists and all that kind of thing. Well, it all tells you what the calls were on that end over there. At the very end, let's find it here. Okay, it's not the end. This, this sheet right here. What this sheet is, is I wanted to show you all the calls that we did last year in our, in our whole territory. And it kind of shows you a breakdown on the top there with, with the major cities that we cover. And then on the bottom, that miscellaneous breakdown, those are all mutual aids that we mutual aid those, those areas to help them out when they need a little bit of help. And so that's the difference between the top and the bottom there. So we did roughly 1,000 911 calls between everything that we, we do here. So before I go any further, do you have any questions or anything on, on the information I gave you as far as I don't think you've had a lot of time to take a look at it, but.
So is a thousand a lot? I mean, give us a, is that middle? What do you, what would you say?
Well, a thousand for the, for the size area that we have, it's quite a bit. I mean, it keeps you busy, keeps you jumping. You'll notice that we've had one, two, and three, and up to four calls at the same time. In Brandon, we've had a few times where we had three within an hour. And it takes us normally about an hour and a half to start a call and finish it and get back into Brandon again. So on those, we're real fortunate that some of our really good paramedics have moved to Brandon and they stay here. A lot of our medics, they work either for Sanford or Avera Flight Systems. And so the average time as a paramedic working for MedStar is unbelievable compared to a lot of areas. The experience is, is high quality. But there again, you know, we've got, I wouldn't say a majority, but a good half of our people live in Brandon now. And that's way better than it ever used to be. Any questions on this?
So when you have like, what do you have, two on, onboard? And then if they have to go out, you call somebody else in?
Yeah, so during the day, we can normally send out three trucks right away because I'm there in the office. I got my Director of Operations as a paramedic there. And then we have our 911 crew on staff. So we normally can send three out right away. And at night, then we staff one 911 truck. If that one goes out, we bring another in to staff that. And the average time to staff the truck is anywhere, depends on where they're coming from. But they have, according to state statute, 20 minutes to get in, to staff a second truck if we needed so. And you'll notice in here that I think we've had two, maybe three mutual aids into Brandon that we needed some help. And a couple of those where we had a couple of trucks out on the road already. But I'll tell you the difference between the community in Brandon and really every other community out there. The first thing is the police, fire, and ambulance all get along. That's unheard of in a lot of towns. It's just, but we get along great. We work well together. The second thing is, is the pride thing is out the door when it comes to somebody needing help. What I mean by that is I'm not going to have somebody waiting an extra half an hour for me to have a truck clear up to send them on a stroke call when I know that there's an ambulance in Sioux Falls on the east side sitting there. And so we, we ask those questions. And if they've got something closer, we'll send them. And, you know, that's, and I think that says a lot about our community and, and the whole works. And our fire department is great, too. They get there, our police department, these guys back here. You know, they show up and CPR, AEDs are going off. And I mean, it's just, the time response in this city, I would, I would match it up to any place in the country as far as what the city has to offer their people from fire protection, police protection, and ambulance protection. So I'm, I'm real proud to be part of, part of this. Otherwise, I don't know what else I can say here. Answer some questions if you have them.
I was just gonna elaborate a little further on Barb's question. So with the 586 in Brandon, how did that compare to like the year before, a couple of years before?
It's about a 3% uptick. And, and you know, I probably, the next time I come in, I'll show the averages for the last couple of years, two, three years, and kind of show you the, the upticks of our, our services. Now, there was a spot, you know, with all this COVID stuff going on, that we actually dropped a lot of calls. We just weren't transporting anybody because people were told to stay home. And a lot of folks are staying home, not with COVID, and getting worse with the disease that they had because everything was COVID-related then. But, you know, we've, we've busted that wide open now and, and we're understanding more about this COVID thing. The state did give us some, some real good apparatuses to wear for the COVID. There are six, eight grand apiece, but they basically snap on our face and they've got to help a filter in the back and one in the, and one in the front. And they did a real good job for us. All of my people have had the shots now. And I must say, all my people have had COVID because that's how we were transported. But, yeah. So, you know, we had our downtick and we're back. I think we're on our way back up for the uptick again. But that was everybody. We're all in the same boat.
So when these, excuse me, Jack. When the, when it's patient refusal, you, you really don't have anything you can do about that, right? If they say they're not going, they're not going?
Right. Well, there's two ways to handle that now. So we had a, we had a patient just not too long ago who had to go. It wasn't their choice. And if Dave was the chief back then, he would have put a hole on him, too. That's one way they have to go is if the police say they, they can't, they can't take responsibility for themselves. And they put them in custody, take them in. Otherwise, the majority of the time, if they say they don't want to go and they can answer questions appropriately, we'll give them all the details of what can happen if they don't. But no, if they don't want to go, they don't go. And those things, you know, and the liposists and things like that, that's the community service type things that are just part of our service and any other service out there. It's things you just do. Unless you treat them on scene with, with a medication or something, then that's a billable event and we can go for that event.
I only see a couple that are listed as 911 call to Brandon as the destination. What are, what are those representing?
Can you tell me where they're?
Like October 2nd, destination says 911 call Brandon. Whereas the other ones will say like Avera, Sanford.
There's probably just a, excuse me, probably just a misprint. I'll take a look at that, but that's probably a misprint. Unless we took somebody from a hospital back to Brandon here, to a nursing home or something like that, which is probably what that would be. Does it say the call was at Brandon?
Yeah, the destination was 911 call Brandon.
Oh, there it is, right there. I see it. I'll have to look into that. I can get you an answer for that. I can't answer that right now.
Okay.
Yep. It is. Now, now you got my interest up.
Any other questions, counsel?
Just a comment. Yeah, I've, I've got a comment. And it's, I'll, I'll say this on behalf of my wife and family and my, and my, most importantly, myself. It is just a big thank you. Three years ago, I had a heart attack and you guys were on scene five miles outside of town in seven minutes, which I thought was incredible. And so that's just a personal thank you.
And you're very welcome and thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Used your services, too, and they've been very good, so thank you. Anything else, counsel? All right. Thanks for coming.
All right, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The fine resolution 621. We just need a motion on that?
Correct. This, this sets a fine for the illegal dumping ordinance that was adopted last month. It becomes effective March 17th, sets the fine at $110 for those folks that are dumping where they shouldn't.
All right. Got a motion in a second to approve resolution 621. Any comments from the counsel? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? All right. Then we have a discussion about the Police Chief Selection Committee.
Seeking volunteer.
I heard, I heard Dave was doing it.
Yeah.
David Dana, right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, you need anything else besides that?
Nope.
Okay. Wage adjustment for Doris on page 109. Doris does all of her utility billing. Do you have a motion on that, please? Motion in a second for increase for Doris. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Boy, we've passed a lot of eyes and knees tonight. Okay. Mayor. Oh, this is a special election?
Yeah, just some information on special, how to fill a vacancy at either the mayor's position or city council. State statutes allows two different options. The default option is appointment by the city council to fill the vacant seat until the next municipal election. And then at the next municipal election, the remainder of the term would be filled. So if they had two years, it all depends on when the resignation is, is submitted and accepted. If they had two years remaining on their, on their term, there wasn't time to get it on the next municipal election, you would appoint someone for one year and then there'd be a, a open seat or vacancy on the city council for the remaining one year of the term. That's the appointment process. The second option is to hold a special election. The only way to do that is if the city council adopts an ordinance prior to the vacancy occurring, that would authorize a special election. We currently do not have that on the, in the code book. And then that would be a special election to fill the remaining term of the, of the vacancy. So if it was a two-year term, it would be a two-year, two-year seat. There are some restrictions on when you can hold that election. You can't hold it within 90 days of a municipal election. So that essentially wipes out January, February, and March since we hold our municipal election in early April, depending on the date. And then the, the procedures would remain the same as any other municipal election with the notice of vacancy, the filing period, the, the period for absentee voter registration, and then ballots and all the notices would, would be the same. So about three and a half months process from start to finish on any special election.
We're through the time again on if it's not a special election with the appointment, with the notice and the timing.
Sure. What, what we do here, it's not required, but what we do with the city of Brandon is if there's a vacancy that occurs, we typically advertise it for a couple of weeks. Ends up being about a month. Then there's, I hate to call it an interview, a kind of a meet, the council type thing. And there can be some questions asked of the, of the applicants. And then an appointment takes place. Usually it takes about a month, you know, a month and a half, maybe. All, again, all depends on times of meetings. So that's what we do. It's not required. But that way, at least it gives members of the public who may be interested in, in sitting on the council or in the mayor's chair, an opportunity to, to express their interest.
Excuse me. So Brian, none of, none of those procedures are, are set by, by statute or ordinance either? Correct? That's just our, been our policy?
As far as appointments?
Yeah.
Correct?
As opposed to the, to the posting and the timeline?
Yeah, the, the special election is all set by statute.
Right. But no, I'm, what I'm talking about is your, is the timeline that you laid out for an appointment?
Nope. Nope, that's not set. That's just something that we've, we've followed for the last number of appointments.
Is that something that needs to be written as a policy?
Yeah, I've, I've thought about that, that we should probably get a policy, vacancy appointment policy in front of the council to outline all that.
I think it's been an unusual last few years with all the vacancies with the health conditions and stuff. I don't think it's happened much in the past, but
It seems to me like it should be written out so that it, so that, well, if nothing else for the future,
Yeah.
you're not going to be here forever.
You never know.
Anything else on that right now?
Other than if, if the council would like to have that ordinance drafted?
For the vacancy, you mean?
Yeah, for the, for the special election. No, not the vacancy, no. It would just be if you want us to draft an ordinance authorizing the filling of vacancies by ordinance, or by special election, we'd have to draft an ordinance for you to consider.
Well, I, I'm not sure. I think I might have been the one that brought it up. But I was just, I was more curious as to what the, the process of the law was just for transparency purposes, that I, I just think that by going through this process and getting it articulated out to the public, here's, here's why we don't have a special election, or here's what we'd have to do if we did have special, I think, a special election, I think it's important. So thanks for the research.
Oh, not a problem.
For me. And I, I just think it's a good process to go through. Personally, no, I'm not ready to move forward, do an ordinance and have a special elections. But I just did, did want to know what the process entailed. And could, you know, in some cases, could we have split that up as to, you know, if the vacancy lasted, I was just going to say, more than six months, maybe it would make sense. But if it's an all or none type of thing, I'm not interested in, in pursuing it further.
Yeah, I, I should have said that according to the city attorney and the attorney general's opinion that she relied on, if you adopt an ordinance calling for special elections, you can only fill a vacancy with special election. You don't have the opportunity to make an appointment. So it's, it's one or the other.
And I was interested in that, too, Jack, if there was that option. But I, I think it would be a negative if we're in a predicament where we can't do anything for several months. I would be interested, though, in a policy on our appointments, though, because like, like with Mayor Lundberg, it's felt like a really big span. He resigned when? The 17th. And we'll have, we'll have that officially filled. What's our, what's our D-Day on?
April 5th is the target date for the appointment with the council. I'm thinking it's next Friday. Is the deadline for the expression of interest forms?
And the interview on Thursday, April 1st?
Typically at a briefing meeting. You know, this, this month is a little unusual because we have five Mondays. So it is spread out a little bit more than, I hate to say normal, but usually it's a four week, a four Monday month, and this time it's a five.
All right. Sensing that we do not want to go the special, special election route, we'll move on to the Mule Deer Foundation raffle request. Does anyone have a concern with this? Otherwise, it will go as presented? All right. Moving on to the Double D Street Dance Agreement. We need a motion for that. Now, I do think that we, that they will be doing the, putting up the fence.
Yes, we, we supply the barricades. We typically put those out on Friday. We supply the, the orange construction fencing, just because not too many people have that amount. They will put up, they will put up the barricades. They will put up the construction fencing, et cetera. So we don't, other than dropping stuff off and picking up the materials later, we don't incur anything.
Because on here, it's, we would need the city to do it. But Paul, when he was up there, said they would do it.
Correct. And it's in the agreement that they will do it.
Okay.
And I know this is strange, but by some chance, it would get like damaged or whatever, then they're responsible.
Yep, we would send, we would send them a bill to replace.
Okay.
I believe last year, they got us a certificate of insurance and it could be a good idea to eyeball that again this year.
That's in there as well, that they have to find it by a certain date.
Okay. So we've got a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Election judges, you need to appoint some judges for the Ward Two election?
Motion to approve.
Three.
Okay. Motion in a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. We've got our election judges, and that, that's when? April?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. Draw for ballot position. I gotta do that?
Yep.
So this is how they are on the ballots?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to elected officials on the policy manual. Is this just a discussion item, or what is this?
Um, no, I'd like to have us be removed from the employee manual. As I understand it, council was added a long time ago, before there was really any document that dealt with city council. So, uh, Sections one point four says that the manual is applicable to all elected and appointed officials, and we shall comply with all policies and laws, including but not limited to discrimination, harassment, and non-retaliation. Those items and much more were added to a document under a code of conduct for the council. Again, it specifically addresses those items and a whole lot more. We did that roughly two years ago, I believe. So I, I, I don't think the employee manual is any longer an applicable place for city council to be. The manual is really designed for employees of the city. I mean, it's predominantly dealing with policies and hours and attendance and overtime and holidays and sick leave and F L, MLA, and things of that nature that, that employers have for employees. So, kind of just a cleanup item.
So where does the social media policy fall for us?
Well, if you recall, when we started the social media discussion a couple of years ago, we had a lot of meetings on it. It started out as a four-page document that called out employees, and then it called out other agents of the city, such as council members. And we went over and over it during several meetings and ended up having a little committee. At one point, Mayor Lundberg said, "It doesn't sound like anybody even wants to go through with this anymore." But we did need to go through with it because without a policy, we couldn't open up our Facebook page. So that's when it was decided that there needed to be a policy that dealt with how that Facebook page was handled. And the prudent thing to do is also to have a small policy for our employees, because most employers have a social media policy for their employees. I would argue that our code of conduct is far superior to a couple paragraphs talking about how you use social media when you're at work, because our code of conduct talks about us having integrity, truthfulness, honesty, being leaders, being civil, being fair, being equitable, uh, not making personal attacks on others, not making promises, being clear of your representation. I mean, it's much more detailed and specific to our roles. I don't believe the employee manual is well-suited for us.
So where does the face, I don't remember this, Dana, sorry. So the social media piece for us, where does it sit? Where is it located at? Is it in the code of conduct, or is it in the employee?
There's not a specific, the code of conduct applies to us in all realms, social media and other. The social media policy, if you remember, Barb, we decided that, we decided we felt it was overstepping to say how you're going to be on social media. I mean, it's, I don't think it's very common that city council members have a specific social media policy. Sioux Falls doesn't. This code of conduct is very specific on how we are to act twenty-four seven, not just when we are on a computer. If the council feels we need a social media policy put into our code of conduct, then, I mean, we can discuss that, but we shouldn't be in an employee manual.
Yeah, I think from what, from I've been able to read through this and also going by what Lisa said in her email, it seems like we're redundant here. And I think Dana mentioned that it, it's actually probably a little more restrictive as to what we can and can't say, and how we, like you said, how we act. Essentially, if you're, you're a public employee, you're on the clock twenty-four seven. And so I think the code of conduct, um, covers us probably, probably better than what the employee manual, more appropriately than, than the employee manual would. I, I think that employee, uh, policy manual, I think that, um, was written for specifically city employees, be it hourly or, or exempt or, or salaried. So I, I guess I would be all in favor of, of removing, uh, elected officials from, from the policy manual, knowing that we're already covered in the code of conduct.
Uh, we have a, we need a motion for a further discussion.
I'll make a motion.
A second. Your motion, you might want to, Dana, you might want to explain your motion.
To remove us from the.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any comments from the rest of council?
It makes sense to me. I mean, going on employees, so, yeah.
Okay. Any comment? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Aye. All right, moving on to posting of draft council packet. I don't know.
Brian, what is that?
Um.
Getting the packet out?
Yeah, getting the draft council packet out on Thursday onto the website.
This is just an admin thing? I mean, we don't have to make a motion or anything, do we?
Well, we did post it this Thursday. We put it as a password, password protected again, like we did up until probably a year, year and a half ago, I think. Just so that the only packet that's out there is, is the final packet. But if the council would like to change that, you certainly can instruct us to.
At all. I would, I would like to keep it going on Thursdays with a disclaimer added that this is a draft document, but I think it's very helpful for people to be able to know what's getting discussed in advance, so if they want to attend our open meeting at the briefings on Thursday, they have an, an idea of what's being discussed.
I like the addition of adding the draft, because I think there was some confusion before, so.
Yeah, I like the idea. I mean, it's only, we're only talking today, and I know that it can change, and, and so long as that articulated in that message, that this is a draft subject to change, you know, it doesn't have to be in the fine print, it can be in the bold print, I, I'm all in favor of it.
Can't you do, on the PDF, you can watermark it, right? That says draft across it? Yeah.
Yeah, something, something to that effect would be helpful, and I think it's just, again, I'm all about transparency, and I think just another way of, uh, when people do go to the website, if they, they choose to check it out, uh, it just gives them a better opportunity, so.
But I, I would, I would urge council to have some grace on some of this stuff. Our staff is really busy. Sometimes they don't have the documentation for some of the things, and so let's be, let's give them a little grace. It's on there, it's draft. You know, we'll be discussing it Thursday night. They can, people can come.
I do want to say thank you to Brian this last time. He did, you know, send an email just to remind us, hey, this is the deadline, if you want something on there. I did appreciate that, Brian, like, just kind of giving us a heads up, so we kind of knew your guys' timeline as well, so I did appreciate that.
And I'm not going to, I echo that, too. It's like, oh, yeah, okay, if I, because I did have something that I was considering getting out there. You don't necessarily have to do it every, every, uh, meeting, but if you remember to do it, that'd be awesome.
If I don't, if I don't do it every year, I'll probably forget.
Yeah.
So, I guarantee that I'm going to, but.
Try.
And you guys don't remember all the deadlines.
Well, you know, a little general reminder, uh, it does not hurt for me, but that was.
Me either.
Oh, yeah. Long technology.
Okay, moving on. Slurry seal. Fascinating stuff. Okay, Tammy, let's get these bids out.
Um, this one was bid with the City of Sioux Falls project. It was over budget. It's at three hundred and seventy-one thousand. We did budget three hundred thousand for it, but this is out of the street maintenance fund, and we have enough funds to cover this plus more. At the last minute, I did kind of add in quite a bit, just to make sure that we were using our funds, and so we did add in Sioux Boulevard to it.
Good. So we need a motion to put those bids out?
To approve the bid.
Approve the bid?
Yep.
Okay.
With asterisk.
Motion in a second to approve the slurry seal bid. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the joint repair?
A joint repair project is a new project for us. This would be for Holly Boulevard, as well as a piece of Aspen that's in between Split Rock and McCarty Park.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve the joint repair project. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? God, we should have a record for how many motions we made tonight. Wow. Okay. East Side Trunk Sewer Proposal. This one is near and dear to my heart. I'm excited about this one.
Yep, this is an hourly not-to-exceed contract for sixty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars with DGR Engineering, and this is for the design for the trunk sewer for the east side of town. As we get more development over there, we're going to need sewer. I also put some language in this contract that the engineer will bring it up to sixty percent plans, and then we will stop them until we know that the development has started.
I think that's a great idea.
So is that when we, like, we know obviously eventually the school will go up there, but if the developers, I know there's some land up there, if they would come to you, let's say, in two months, saying, hey, we want to start building houses, then?
Then we would be ready.
Okay.
Well, we have a petition form that they need to sign, and so allow, and then there would come to you for a compor, and then we could offer at DGR to finish out the plant within it.
Yeah, the, the draft route is shown on page one eighty-three, goes up to Redwood. But yes, this is in anticipation of the school, that elementary school being out, built out on that east side sometime in the next, uh, three to seven years. How about that for a window?
Yeah.
And then there is a developer out there that owns eighty acres, um, that I think is in the process of putting together preliminary plans.
Uh, concept plans first. And you did tell me today that they're working on it, so I would expect to see those pretty soon.
Well, I would make a motion to, to approve this, because I've been interested in this for a long time. Okay, we've got a motion in a second for the East Side Trunk Sewer Proposal. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Posed? All right, we'll get going on that. Water Treatment Plant Design Proposal from Geotech.
This is just do, to do some extra soil borings around our existing water treatment plant, to help out with the design of the water treatment plant. Those are expected to be right around that twenty-two-hundred-dollar range.
Thirty-two-hundred, yeah.
Thirty-two-hundred, right. Yep.
All right, somebody make a motion to spend some more money?
Second.
Such enthusiasm.
I'll, uh, second thirty-two-hundred.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. Okay. Yeah, okay. So we've got a motion in a second. Any more discussion on the Geotech? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. And something else exciting, the West Side Trunk Sewer Proposal, which I'm excited about, too. Want to hear about that one, Tammy?
Yeah, much like the east side, the west side is going to need sewer as well. This is another contract with DGR to put, to do the design on the sewer that they would stop at sixty percent plans, and that's at a hundred and three thousand, nine hundred.
And I would make a motion for that, because our limitation out on the west side is sewer for development.
Seven.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second for the West Side Trunk Sewer Proposal. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right. I really appreciate that sixty percent thing, Tammy, too. That's a great idea, I think. Okay. Water Treatment Plant Facility Plan. Sorry to make you sit here all night. I apologize for that.
Saving the best for last year.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah. Something like that.
A ton, right? Yep.
Yep.
All right, here to, um, talk over the completion of the facility plan and next steps. Ben Jolson here with A two S, sorry. Just a refresher on the facility plan, what we looked at.
Do I have the controller? Do I just tell you when to jump? All right. Starting out, we evaluated the growth the city is currently seeing, and used that to estimate the projected water usage going into decades into the future. We also established treated water objectives, in addition to expansion, of course. With those objectives and the projected, projected, excuse me, growth in water usage, we evaluated alternatives. There was two softening alternatives, two non-softening alternatives. And then we looked at the rate impacts for those alternatives for, for each of the four there. Following that, we contacted the required environmental agencies. Those are, are set forth in the state's requirements for the facility plan. Requested input from them, received input from all of them on any thoughts and considerations for the recommended project, or the recommended alternative, excuse me. And then we also held a public hearing to allow for any public comment on the project, which, that's also a state requirement there. Our recommendation is alternative three. That is the expansion plus RO softening. That expansion would expand the existing building to the east, still on city-owned property, that provides the treatment capacity looking out into a fifty-year projected growth period, which doubles the plant capacity right there on the same site. We have generally the same treatment as the existing facility. We run through aeration, radium removal with the HMO addition, filtration, disinfection. A couple of the differences, one would be the RO softening, which can be bid as an alternate and decided on at bid time if the costs are acceptable, and you want to move forward with constructing the RO treatment with that treatment located at the end of the plant. It, it, it makes it a lot easier to do it now or do it in the future. You can, you can add it in there versus if it was in the middle of the treatment process. And then we're adding residuals management process, and that is to reduce as much as possible, or eliminate if possible, any of the flows that generally get sent to the sewer stream right now, mainly from the filter reclaim process, through the filter backwash, there's a backwash basin. Most of that's tried, you try and reclaim back into the process just to reduce your water loss. Right now, with the solids that accumulate in that basin, a lot of that is sent to the sewer, so we'll add a process of essentially de-watering, so that only solids then get sent to the landfill in something like a dumpster, and all of the waters reclaimed back into the process, or as much as possible, which should greatly reduce the amount of water sent to the sewer from the plant. Comparing the alternative three with RO back to alternative one, which is the, we call it the base alternative of expansion only, you can see up on the screen is a preliminary layout on the right-hand side of what the existing and expansion would look like together, and then a aerial view on the left side. Everything in red would be new facility. On the east side of the plant is the On the east side of the plant is the treatment expansion. On the west side, there's a couple of red areas that would be, uh, a, a new electrical room and a high-service pump station. Where that high-service pump station is located now in the plant down in the basement, it's not real easy to expand that without taking the plant offline, which that's, those are the pumps that serve the distribution system in the city. So getting those out of the basement, uh, allows for maintenance and expansion a lot easier. And then here's alternative three. You can see, in addition, is just that RO area on the north side of the east expansion. All right, go ahead. Looking at the design considerations, so broke these into both the expansion with RO and the expansion only. They're largely similar in the aspects of both are doubling the treatment, uh, plant capacity. Both are adding that residuals management, both are, um, adding new high-service pump station. The difference being that RO, uh, portion of the process with that alternative three. As I mentioned, that RO, both the building and the treatment process can be bid as an alternate if you want to go through with the full design and, uh, decide on that bid day if, if that's to move forward into construction. All right, go ahead. Showing the rate impacts has, has been shown before. Um, we looked out a few years to twenty-twenty-five at what the rate impacts potentially could be for expansion only and the expansion with softening. Um, expansion only being that fourteen, eighteen dollar range, uh, and then with the softening being that total of twenty-six to thirty-five dollar range. The actual rate impacts, as noted up there, depend on the, the final project costs, um, which are the final costs will be known on bid date. And then the loan duration and rate structure, how that loan gets set up. One thing we also looked at, uh, is the, on the softening side, uh, we estimated for those that soften it with a, a, um, standard water softener and add salt in there. You'd save about a bag of salt per month. Now, you can continue to soften at that point, but that cost was not included in there, but that, that, uh, just for consideration, you're saving that bag of salt that you're granted, it's only, what, six, seven dollars a, a month would offset some of that softening, added softening costs. Looking at the design schedule, uh, we break this into preliminary and final design, and then the bidding phase at the end. The preliminary design, which is planned to take about three months, would establish our basis of design summary, um, for all the disciplines, not just process, but go through, um, you know, HVAC, your plumbing, your structural basis of design that gets put together in a design, uh, base of design report and is used to finish out the rest of the design. Survey also gets conducted right away in preliminary design and then the RO pilot study. Um, if we go forward with that RO, uh, design, RO in the design, we'd have a two-month pilot study to establish the design parameters for that RO system. Then we move into final design. That's, we're looking at taking, or having that last about seven months. We finalize equipment sizing, which in turn finalizes your site and your building layouts, and then we finish out, uh, the plans and specifications for the bidding process. Um, bidding, I'm showing one to two months on there, and a project this size, we're probably looking at that four to six-week bidding timeframe. Um, but we'd probably talk with, uh, contractors when we get close that timeframe to make sure that's adequate for the size and the current bidding environment going on. Okay? Okay, and then, uh, going forward, uh, either option, whether it's expansion or expansion with RO, does provide the added or the, the, the built-in or added capacity, doubling the existing plant capacity to allow you to provide water to your continuing community growth looking down the road for years. And we're here to help the city with, uh, either decision moving forward. So I will open it up to any questions.
Yeah, Ben, so, uh, expand on that, uh, RO pilot study. What, what does that all involve and, uh, the cost thereof as well?
That, so during the facility plan, we made some general assumptions on the recovery rate of that RO, of an RO system. Recovery rate is how much water is recovered as RO permeate, that's your drinking side, and how much is lost in the concentrate, which is all the hardness and everything else you're taking out. And so we, we used a, um, conservative estimate of seventy-five percent recovery and using that on half the water would go through the RO system. That pilot study makes sure that we don't really run into any unforeseen's. Um, it will allow us to confirm that that recovery rate is acceptable, um, that we're not seeing, you know, higher fouling with the membranes, um, or quicker degradation of the membranes with that, uh, recovery rate. And also looks at how well the membranes clean up, um, just to figure out if there's anything in the water that's, for lack of a better term, throwing a curve ball into it, um, to plan for cleaning systems on the RO membranes because they run through periodic cleanings. On groundwater, it's probably only a couple of times a year. Uh, but really it, it solidifies what our assumptions would be by running through a pilot study. And on groundwater, we can be pretty short with those. Um, if it were a surface water plant, we want to run through with the seasons, so you usually run like a year long. Groundwater, pretty stable, so we're only looking at probably a two-month pilot study. What that entails is getting a small-scale unit from, um, an RO supplier usually. They have RO units that are either, they rent out for really cheap or they let you borrow really and just purchase membranes because a lot of them want to get their equipment into, uh, use on the pilot study to show off their equipment, really. Run that at the plant with the raw water coming in for that two-month period, collecting data every day, um, and then run it through a cleaning process just to verify, like I said, that it's performing as we are expecting it to perform. And to make sure if, if there's any differences, we find those out now in the pilot study, uh, so you don't do a full design, go into operation, and then find out some things that were unknown now that you've done full scale.
Okay, so does that, um, study, does that, is that one of the main things that you need to determine, um, how to design the plant for an eventual, um, RO addition, let's say? That, or is what else is involved with that?
Yeah, that pilot study really, it nails down your design parameters for the RO system. So it'll help you determine what pressure you're going to end up running at, which is a, a big factor in, you know, deciding how big your pumps are going to be for running that equipment and what your electrical load is going to be. You know, we can, we start with some assumptions, um, based on past similar projects, but every water source is a little different. Um, so they, that really helps establish and solidify, so we're, we don't under-design or we don't, you know, if you, if you don't do that now, we'll make some assumptions planning for RO in the future. And then we might estimate on the, the conservative side, so plan for a little, say, bigger electrical load than what we might think is, is anybody, so you don't have to expand your electrical room unnecessarily in the future. Did I answer your question there or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's, so you're going to collect a lot of data and you're going to use the data, but it doesn't sound like that part of it is, physically all that expensive to do.
No, I wouldn't, no, it's not, not hugely expensive, no, for the pilot part of it.
Right.
No, it's not.
And it's only a couple of months and you're just essentially gathering data and a little bit of labor change and, uh, media and stuff like that, right?
Yeah, we, so walking through kind of the, the day-to-day steps, we'd, there's, um, once everything gets on site, you have setup, so you gotta decide where that skid's going to go based on its size, run a water source to it, run a power source to it. Um, if we can collect that data through the plant's SCADA system, that helps a lot in trending data. Um, otherwise they, they will have a PLC right on them that collects their data that you download off of them. Generally, uh, personnel stops either once a day, sometimes, um, the owner staff does some of the, the day-to-day sampling or data collection. Sometimes we'll have someone run over there and do it, or pretty close here to, to stop over and do it. But there's just, there's day-to-day collection and monitoring, and then there's, um, I would say the longer term, every couple of weeks or a few weeks, you're taking that data and you're doing more of a, a download and analysis of how this thing's operating. Um, and if any, anything's changing that you wouldn't think would be and what you need to look in further. And then, like I said, at the end, we make sure we run through a cleaning process and then run it for a real short period after that to see how those membranes have recovered after a clean and if they've recovered back to the level you expect. Or if they don't fully recover, then, then you dig into why a little bit.
I was just studying one other, one other, uh, brings on checklist that you need to, need to determine, uh, so that you can design this, uh, as, as a bid alternate for the RO process.
Um. Well, uh, you know, are you saying not without going through the full design? Or with, really, to, to design as bid alternate, you have to fully design it. Because that, the contractor needs that to put a price on it. They have to know what, what's being built to bid it as an alternate. So when you bid as an alternate, it is, it is fully designed at that point. And then it just, if it's, to walk through the, the bid process, if it's, they provide an alternate price for that RO portion of the building and all the equipment. And if it's decided that that wasn't good enough price, you don't want to do that, that portion is just not put into the contractor's contract and it's not built at that time. So at that phase, you have it designed, you could always rebid it in the future, um, but it, it's, it's already designed at that point if you were to decide later.
Okay, I think the, the question that, for me, is the cost of that design, of getting to the, the cost of the, just to the design of the RO side of it, and if it's, if it's, uh, uh, an extravagant number to do that, I don't think, uh, personally, I, I don't know that I could support it. Uh, I'm not sure, uh, I don't know that any of us, uh, I'll speak, uh, uh, just, I'll just speak for myself. Right now, I don't know that I would be in support of the RO system, um, but I want to see the cost of it. You know, I, I, that's why I think the consensus around here is we want to see what that bid alternate cost is. But to get to that point, if it's cost prohibitive to even get to that point, I don't know that I could be in a, be a big supporter of that. So can you give us some ideas to what that design cost is going to be?
Yeah, and I had them, I got them right up here. The difference, so to add in the RO, the RO portion of the building is about roughly three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that's the whole building, the treatment process, that's, that's everything in that RO box. We did talk about, you know, another split option of you could do an alternate of the treatment process and alternate of the building because the building would, is just a single-level building, something you could use as a garage, but that, that would further complicate the bidding process. Complicated in the, in the sense of, you know, it breaks part of your decision on bid day.
Ben, I'm just curious, like, I don't know, I, I'm not, I know I'm not an expert at all of this. This RO softening process, is this something that's been around a long time or is it something that's a trend that maybe something else better comes along?
It's been around, it's been around for quite a while. It's, I would say it's picking up popularity. Um, you know, it's essentially, it's another option, uh, compared to lime softening. Lime softening is kind of that tried and true softening process, it's been around forever. Um, RO is more of the higher-tech version of that, um, but it turns it into more of a mechanical softening process versus a chemical softening process because you're forcing that water through the membrane and re, holding back all your hardness and everything else that's being held back and putting your permeate through. So it's, it's a softening process like lime, lime softening, but it's a completely different approach is where it's, it's mechanical versus chemical.
What was the, the waste on, on the RO as far as like water, is that the twenty-five percent?
The volume wise?
That isn't recovered?
It'd be, yep, it'd be twenty-five percent of the water that goes through the RO process and only half the water would go through the RO process. So if you're looking at big picture, the overall plant water, it'd be about twelve and a half percent of that water in the concentrate stream.
I think the, excuse me, the struggle I have is what, uh, Jack is saying is the cost difference with adding the RO. But when I step back and think, okay, this plan is going to last us for what, forty years?
We're looking at about fifty years, yeah.
Fifty years. Are people, and not saying that we would do the RO, but, but to not even look at it, I'm not sure that that is wise considering it's going to be around for so long. Now, we may choose not to do it, but if we don't look at it, then we're kind of working with one arm tied behind our back. We don't have all of the information. So I'm struggling too.
So, is there any, a couple of questions. One, is there any other benefit to RO besides softening?
That'd be the main reason we're using it. Um, if you look at what else is being removed with it, it's, it's removing, um, most of, you know, all your, your, your components in the water. The permeate is pretty much pure water. So, you know, one thing is, it's all, you're all, all, excuse me, you're already removing radium with your, um, HMO addition and IMR media and the filtration process. This RO would be like a belt and suspenders on top of that. Any, any remaining radium, you're removing a majority of that, of the half the water that's going through RO. So it's al, also removing anything, um, that would be getting through the filter media. Now, through the samples we've seen from filter media, that's pretty much removing it to non-detect anyway. So it's, it's very little, if any, coming through the media. But that'd be another benefit is it, you kind of a backup to that with RO removing what would be half of any remaining radium in the water there.
Okay. So it, I, I've lived here for a while and the number one complaint about Brandon has always been, before anybody even said radium was hard water. I mean, it's, and it's, it's aggressively hard. Um, so if we, if we decide not to even study this or even look at a design in ten years, if a new council wants to look at it, how much more is that design? I mean, the, the, the things that you're going to be putting in when you design it, even if we opt not to do it, it, it will be, what things will be missed and will have to be, uh, sort of retrofitted in ten years if they decide to put it in. And the design we could do now would be ready for it to go.
We will, if RO isn't planned to be designed now, we would design the expansion planning that someday you may want to do RO. So, you know, for the electrical load, we'll add in extra space in the electrical room to accommodate additional electrical load, load in the future. And we would lay out the building as if we were still going to put RO there, so it could be put there in the future. And we'll, we'll leave that space there. So whether or not RO is designed or constructed now, we will plan to lay out the design of the expansion thinking that someday RO may go there, so we won't impede that if at all possible. So, talking to your point, if you, if you want to do it in the future, we'll, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that that space is still there to do that in the future if you want to.
And then, one other thing, I have a question, if I heard you correctly, you're saying even if we did do RO, the citizens would only notice maybe a bag of salt less a month that they would have to use? Is that right?
Yep, that's from, from your softening salt usage, yep.
When do you get rid of that, you know, sometimes there's the white things floating in the water? I don't know what that is.
That's, my folks had that once, and that, that came from their softener dissolving a piece inside of their water heater.
Okay, that's not in the water.
What that was, but.
Water heater.
Um, it, uh, and that, that one bag of salt a month is assuming an average household using six, six thousand gallons per month, so scale accordingly on there.
So, what, what you're, go ahead.
I was just going to say.
You were ready for me.
I was just going to put it out there that I'm, I would be in favor of doing what you just said, just doing the water treatment plant expansion only with the space for down the road. I just, I think where we're at financially right now, spending three hundred and seventy-one thousand on a, on a look on the heels of our, our community doing a survey and giving us their feedback, saying that they don't want it. I don't see us doing the RO anytime soon, so that would be where I would be.
Yeah, and just, so basically what you're saying, Ben, is you would design the building to be able to accommodate RO in the future. Like you say, maybe an extra, you know, extra larger, uh, utility room, an electrical room. As long as that, and, and I think that's, for me, that's, that's the design I want to see, is that, for that possibility. But I, I can't, uh, I can't support spending an extra three hundred and seventy thousand for something that I, I am about ninety percent sure that I won't support in the future for, or, or, you know, coming soon. But I do want that building to be built. Um, but I do want that building to be built so that we can expand it in a future date without having to go through this whole process.
Yep.
And that's not going to cost us 370,000.
Nope, that's that, just the base expansion design, um, that's up there. So if you look at it, you take the RO out, the rest is going to stay the same, so RO can go there in the future.
Mm-hmm. And quite frankly, I think if there's any question, well, of course, never mind, I'm just going to say something that, but I'm talking to an engineer, I know you'll overdesign.
Um, I do want to point out that, um, the, our consultant and our staff has recommended that we go with number three. So we do rely on them for their expertise, so I'm just going to point that out, show that it's duly noted in the minutes. And if there's more questions, let's get them done.
I don't have a question, I have a statement. I, I think the, getting the information, you know, we've, we've got estimates of what, uh, what the cost addition would be as far as to the, the consumer. We won't know the actual numbers until we get the design, have an idea of, of, you know, as far as the bids of what that would be and, and it could come in more favorable, it could come in higher. And I think that we do need the information in order to make that, that decision. A survey that was done was, was that a scientific survey? That was not a scientific survey, it was just a, and.
Can we engage the University of South Dakota political science majors to do it?
No. Yeah, and.
Did we educate before?
You know, there's always that silent majority out there. Um, you know, I'm, I'm fine with the water as it is, but then again, water's been a big issue, the radium has been a big issue, the hardness has been a big issue. And I think personally, I think just, we just need the information, what would it cost? And when those costs are, uh, are up to grabs, then we can make a decision on whether or not to go with it now or just leave it as a decision for the future.
So you're saying number three?
Yes.
Can I make a motion? So.
I'll make a motion that we just do the W, the water treatment plant as is with, as we discussed, the room to accommodate down the road. No RO.
Option.
Option one. So with that survey, what kind of participation did we get? Because if I remember correctly, it was, it was one of the highest participations we've ever gotten from a survey. Wasn't it like a thousand people or something?
This is how I look at it, even if you just do the water expansion plant with no RO, it's still at most, if we do the high end, roughly right now, we're estimating, would be $25 increase to your water bill. That's even, that's lower than if we would have the RO part of it. And I think a lot of people would rather, whether they buy another bag of salt than having those, their water prices increase. And I, I'm just trying to think of the overall pocket for our citizens, how much money they're spending when it comes and they write that bill every month, what it's going to look like.
I could also, I guess, I would argue that on expansion only, that surcharge is going to go up whatever dollar amount that that's going to go up and it, your water's going to stay the same. If you don't even look at the RO, and maybe it's only going to be $5 more, and if it's only $5 more, then I think a lot of people would be willing to pay to get better, I want to say better water, but, um, their hardness level to go down, um, more radium removal, um, it's just an, it's an RO system at the point.
What is, what is the, uh, low end estimate of what this is going to cost to, to just build the plant or the high end estimate of what it's going to cost just to build the plant? Was it 22 million?
That, that includes RO. That's the RO, option three is 22 million and the option one is 12.
Yeah. 12.9?
Yeah.
12.9?
Yep.
So we're talking a difference between 1.7% of the entire cost to 2.9%? Is my math right?
Four.
As far as the extra 371,000 would const, uh, would, would represent?
Yeah, I've, I've got it, uh, if the RO is selected to be 3.1% of construction cost additional, I didn't look at, I turned.
I'm just talking about the design.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking 1.1 million for just option one versus 1.5 billion for option three. So.
Well, um, if we have no one that changes their vote and we're deadlocked, we've got to get going on this. So I guess, I don't, I don't know what our options are. I guess we can wait until we have a seated mayor that would break the tie, that puts them in an awfully awkward position to throw them into that.
Pushing the project down the road further, the latest things, I mean, kind of on that timeline, we want to get these bids.
Correct?
Correct.
And this is our last meeting of this month, so we're talking about pushing it back into, into April.
April, just to get a proposal. So if you didn't vote on it this meeting and you waited until the first meeting in April, we still wouldn't have a proposal until the end of April, which means we're not going to start working on it until May. We're really pushing those deadlines on if we're going to do construction next year because we'd have to have it designed out by the end of the year. I mean, unless we can bid it in January, February, March, I don't know, on a water treatment plant, if there's certain times of the year that's better to bid it or not.
Ideally, winter, if you're in general, better.
Is the best.
Contractors have more available time to hold for something, um, really, it, it kind of year, but.
Might just pay more.
Yeah, if you're looking at trying to get your deal if it's in the winter months.
This is, this is one of the biggest projects that we've got going on in the, in the coming years. And we're talking about going, you know, cheap on it. Yeah, I, I know 371,000 sounds like a, a lot of money, but spread out over the, the lifetime of this plant, we're talking not a lot of money. And, uh, and just to have all that information, get the design, get an idea of what the actual rate cost would be, and then again, put it to, uh, put it to the people that we're, we represent, I think makes the most sense. This is a huge project and I don't think we should go cheap on it as far as the, uh, as far as the design. And we might come down to the point where we say, yeah, okay, it's an alternative bid, we're not going to go forward with, with that portion. I think that's the time, once we get all the information, that's the time to make that kind of a decision.
Okay, so I have a question, Ben. So you said with expansion only, we are adding in there where there'd be ability to add RO, right?
Yep.
The only part that's going to be different for whether we go with it or not is the fact that is really the, so Dave, what you're saying is you want to spend 371,000, so we just know the cost estimate of what RO would cost the citizens. Like, right? So because both of these RO bid alternative, it's not like you're putting extra pumps or anything in it, you're just saying you're going to expand it later on anyways, unless we decide to go with the whole big thing. So you just want to, you want to see how much money it's just going to bottom pocket for this, the taxpayers.
Yes.
For the 371. See, that's just what's hard for me, I just feel like it's just a lot of money.
Well, you know, if we go back to our whole water discussion with Lewis and Clark, we just got crucified that, that the previous council 20 some years ago did not go with Lewis and Clark. Well, you know, they had a whole different set of information and it's easy to criticize that now because we know different facts. So I keep going back to the point where like, not getting the information, are we setting ourselves up for, well, they didn't really check it out, they just said no. And I see it similar to our discussion a couple of weeks ago. We didn't even want to get the information and I find that frustrating. It is a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but I, I think we've got to at least know what, what the options are. We, again, we have one hand tied behind our back this way.
Yes, I'll just add, you know, if we're doing this to find out the cost, we've had an expert engineering firm give us an estimation of the cost, 14 to 18 if we expand, 26 to 35 with softening, and we were talking highs and lows a couple of minutes ago. I mean, that's a low of 14 and a high of 35 with softening, that's more than double to the, the resident. I guess I, I trust that those estimates are fairly close. I don't think we're going to see a $5 amount is all it's going to be for RO. And I'll go back to the, the question I asked about the survey, survey, did we find out how many participated in that?
Yeah, we had almost, uh, 1,198 total responses and we got approximately 3,500 helps.
So really good participation from our community and they said no.
Um, that was also a survey that was just asked if you want to spend more money on water. Um, we didn't provide any education, we didn't tell them the benefits of RO, we didn't tell them the cost difference, we didn't, we didn't do anything except for ask if they wanted to pay more money. So I mean, right?
Do you have a survey question there? I think it was more than that.
Please.
I do have a question. I don't mean to put you on the spot, sorry, but, so you're talking about rate increases, right? From 14 to 18, 26 to 35, so that's the increase over what we currently pay for our water?
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Do you know, like, regionally where that sets us as far as how we build our water, who, how our rates compare to some other communities, how they compare to?
Yeah, we, we complete a rate survey every year.
Yep.
Um, at, at least for the communities that do respond, uh, with data we can use, that will put you up higher, quite a bit higher in the ranking.
Which one, both or?
For water costs, for, uh, uh, for the softening, um, side.
Okay.
For, I'm trying to remember, it's been a little bit since I looked back at that, but.
I know, sorry.
But that, uh, you got to also take into account that generally those communities that are at, on the high side in that rate comparison have been the most recent that have done projects. Um, so they've had to increase their rates. So, um, you know, it pushes you up now, but then knowing that this is putting you, setting you up for decades, uh, you, if things continue and, and those other communities do projects to catch up, you'd, you'd work your way back down the list.
Do you happen to know what, what like, let's say, Yankton just finished a water treatment plant with RO, what's their monthly payment?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the number, but they're, they're at the top, I think, of systems in their size range.
But they have a brand new facility in the last year?
Yep, something like that, last couple are, at the latest. But they're, they're right at, if they're not the top, they're right at the top of their, their water cost right now.
Okay, I want to look at another aspect here. So Tim, you're a small business owner. I know we're looking at like residents and, uh, of course, that's a huge factor, but even businesses, I don't know, because I've never started a company. But if, would this be something, like, we're growing, is this something like a business owner's going to look at, the, the cost of water rates, like, what's going to stop them from going here to Harrisburg or Sioux Falls or T, putting up something?
So for the most part, most industrial businesses don't use a lot of water, unless they're in the process of cutting steel or they're, I mean, there's some processes that require water, a lot of those people reclaim their own water and then just reuse it. So, um, the, the people that this does affect and that I have talked to are restaurants. Because when they have to run hard water through two different softeners so that they can put it through a coffee machine or through a soda fountain, and then they ruin their equipment, their dishwashers or whatever because of our hard water, that's what prohibits people from coming here. So I have talked to those people and they have told me it's too expensive to try to get my equipment to last.
Now, that's one thing, when you asked about what can softening do for us, that was one of the things that we went through is reduces scaling on fixtures and household appliances, so it does help that as well.
I would add that too with developers, that there's a perception that we have bad water. And when those home builders come in, that is a big concern for them because somebody always has to ask about the water. And we had a room full of people with the annexation process and everyone that I talked to was, do we have to connect on to City of Brandon water because we have MCWC or we have our own wells? And MCWC does have soft water.
A lot of that's about price too. I don't think that they're necessarily factored on one item.
Oh, I, I'm sure there is, but why would they pay more for less water quality? I mean, they want something that's at least comparable to what they're getting now.
Tammy, do you think if, um, and, and we're not even talking about doing the RO, we're just talking about getting the information. It's expensive information, but we're only talking about getting the information. And there could be a different council sitting up here by the time this information comes through. We're not up here for perpetuity. Um, if we changed our water system and did the RO, do you think, you know, how, how do, can we even get that perception changed over time, do you think? Yeah?
I think we, yeah, definitely, with a good education plan right around with it.
Okay, let me, let me, let me try to put it in context one more time.
Uh, the question would be how, this is a 20-year bond?
Correct.
So 371,000 over 20 years with interest would be, I mean, we're, we're not talking about, we're going to take 300, a stack of 371 dollars and push it into this. This would be a, a yearly addition or cost of 20?
Yeah, about 20 grand.
To the bond?
For, yeah, it's, it, because this would be part of the bond. It's, it's not a, it's not a, taking a rate and a check right now for 371,000. It's, uh, it's, it's laid out and again, it gives us the information that we need to make the decision. And I don't know if anybody's moving on this.
Why don't you make a motion and let's see?
I would make a motion that we go with alternate three.
Second. Well.
Or what?
Option three is the actual build it, uh, what we're, what we're.
With the, with the.
Bid alternate.
With a bid alternate on the RO.
All right.
Whatever that is, second thought.
Well, Paul, unless there's more stuff.
I, I, Barbie, I have a good point, like, as much as I don't like 371,000 or whatever, I don't want these mistakes of like, that's how Florida was a part. I don't want that to come back and, so I do see that, Larry, you want to show me that it's built.
We have the building space, it could be looked at in five years. This is, we're not logging anything in place, we're not saying RO can never come to Brandon, we're saying we don't foresee doing it in the foreseeable future. And that we're going to put that 370,000 towards other things. And after seeing the CIT and hearing that we're five years in debt.